All right, it's seven oh one and I want to call this meeting to order. I welcome everyone to the November Meeting of the Zoning Farmington Zoning Board of Appeals. Commissioner Callahan, I would ask you to read the notice, please, for the record.
All right, I just had to enlarge it a little bit. Town of Farmington Zoning Board of Appeals, notice is hereby given that the zoning board of appeals will hold a hybrid perenn, in-person and online closed perenn public hearing on Monday, November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three at seven P M. in the Town Hall Council Chambers on the following applications. Lee Jin application for variance to locate accessory structure and other than required yard for property located at seventy Alpine Drive, R forty O S Zone. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this hybrid public hearing. The link to this meeting may be found on the town of Farmington's website at W W W dot Farmington dash C T dot org slash about dash Farmington slash calendar dash meetings. A copy of this proposal is available online at W W W dot Farmington dash C T dot org slash government slash zoning dash Board of Appeals or by calling the Planning Department at Farmington Town Hall at eight six zero six seven five two three two five. Dated at Farmington, Connecticut, October twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three, Farmington Zoning Board of Appeals, John Schoenhorn, Chairman.
Um, Mr. Daigle, I'm gonna, because this is a hybrid meeting, maybe we should do a roll call and then I can appoint alternate Commissioner Marsh to someone who might be absent of the regular commissioners.
No problem. Give me one second to get my list. All right, Commissioner Marsh. Okay, Commissioner Healy. I don't see Commissioner Healy. Commissioner Walsh?
Here.
Commissioner, Chairman Schoenhorn, I'm sorry.
Here.
Commissioner Nadeem is absent. Commissioner Lullen. I do not see. Commissioner Cloud.
President.
And Commissioner Callahan.
Here.
Mister Chairman, we have five members present.
All right, so we have a quorum and I'm going to appoint Commissioner Marsh to, uh, to act as a regular commissioner tonight in place of Commissioner Nadeem. All right, so the first order of business is the application for variance by Lei Jin. I don't know if I'm pronouncing it correctly, close enough. And because of this, this is a reapplication, I was wondering, Mr. Daigle, if you would at least give us a summary of the current situation and how this application has been brought back to the board. When did it last come before the board?
So the commission last heard this application, the actual last meeting was March. I'm sorry, I remember off the top of my head.
Believe you're correct, it was the March.
Sorry. Yes, yeah, March twentieth, twenty twenty-three. So the homeowner had installed a shed, not knowing that a registration form was required by the town, so the shed had already been placed and then the homeowner applied for the current afterwards. The shed. I'm just gonna pull up the map here really quick. So the property is a corner lot. Because it's a corner lot with frontage on both Alpine Drive and Dunstable Close. The regulations state that we take the midpoint of the four property lines and draw an X and then we pick the rear quadrant as the area where a shed is allowed. So that's, I'm, I'm very sorry. There we go. There we go. I'm sorry about that. So this red box right here is the allowed area boat area by right, five feet off the side property lines. We have Alpine Drive here and Dunstable Close here. The shed is approximately here outside of the required front yard setback on the side, but but outside of the permitted by right area. After the commission voted to deny the application at your March meeting. Yeah, the property owners indicated a desire to reapply with it with some different arguments. Staff also met with them to discuss alternatives. The application has come before you again tonight. Some of the reasoning for the location has changed and the homeowners have proposed to install evergreen plantings along the property line to shield the the shed from the road, which does not require any form of permitting with the town as long as it's outside of the right away.
And if I just made my recollection is that it, the, the application in March was denied because of the insufficient grounds for hardship. Is that correct?
Yes, give me one second. I can read you the exact. Members voting. I'm sorry. Looking at the wrong one. Members voting opposition to the application felt the application did not provide sufficient hardship for the requested location of the shed.
And of course, this is the situation where they had built the shed without a permit, without town approval outside of, and so they were coming after the fact and seeking authorization post hoc, right?
Ye- yes, so it's a, it's a pre-built shed, so it was just delivered to the site by the company. Those companies usually just put a clause in their contract that you're responsible for getting permit. Sheds under two hundred square feet do not require a building permit. This is a little over two hundred, so it does require a building permit, I'm sorry. And that's when they they had gotten shit delivered and then applied for a building permit, which happened, happens. People do work and then apply for building permits. It happens fairly frequently, not knowing the allowed location for the shed.
Okay, all right. So as I understand the law that after six, six months, a party can reapply and we have a different application. It's not simply a reapplication. This is a new application. Is that correct?
Yes, so the state statutes say the zoning board of appeals cannot, is not required to rehear the same application within the six-month period. Theoretically, if an application were to come forward, we could have a discussion of whether it was a separate matter. You could have a discussion on whether the application is substantially different than the previous denial. Instead, we just waited the six months just to make it clean. So so staff advised the homeowner to reapply after six months.
Right, so in other words, after six months, there's no heightened requirement that it be substantially different.
Correct.
Just that it's a new application. We're going to consider it on the merits tonight.
Correct.
Um, so the way this works, you've been through this process, but it was remote last time, so let me just say this, you will have your opportunity now to, to state your, your case. If there's anyone here that wishes to speak in your favor, they may do so. I understand we have some communications that were received. And if anyone wishes to speak in opposition to it, they will have that opportunity after you make your presentation. So we do have your thirty-one pages of material that you submitted. What would you like to talk about? And I would indicate that it would be our preference for you to talk about the hardships rather than the benefits. And the reason for that is that there may be many benefits for to you or even the neighborhood to put something outside of the zoning regulations, but we have those regulations. So we want to hear why you need a variance because of the hardship to you to put it someplace that is within the regulations.
Mister Chairman, may I just jump in really quick? Liam, could you just come up to the podium and state your names for the record? And then I've pulled up the presentation material you sent me by email first, so we'll start there.
That's it. All right, so good evening, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners, and good evening, everyone. First, I would like to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to stand here, explain our cases. And before I start, I would like to explain a few things, you know, as a first-time homeowner, right, we're chasing American dreams and we have a lot of lessons to learn here. First, as Ms. Garrett, you know, explained that first time when we trying to apply or trying to get a shed because we have two-car garages so crowded and we didn't know that we need a permit. And unfortunately, the company who built the shed for us didn't tell us either. So we end up the situation right now that we already built the show there. So the first time when we understand that we need a permit, we applied immediately and we found out there's a zoning regulation over there. So that's another lesson we learned and at that time we were told that we can apply for variance, right? But we didn't, at that time, I have to be honest, we didn't totally understand the procedures, what we need to do. We thought that will be, you know, apply the form, you know, get the application, then we're done. We didn't even know that we need to explain the hardship and to be honest, at that time, we didn't even think about the hardship because we didn't think that we need to move. So that's why, you know, that's, as I say, it's a lesson learned. And that's why this time we're gonna, you know, apply more information over here because after the first denial, we start serious to think about move the shed. And after we think about moving the show, we found out there are hardships that we would like to, you know, reapply here. That's why, you know, we're standing here right now. So the new information we add, as we said, we're gonna add the hardship over here and also we're gonna have some, you know, explain some benefit, you know, even though you just mentioned that I would like to expand a little bit of benefit, why we're location here. And then we expand a little bit more information about what we got offering over there to, for this application. So the first thing is a hardship and you know, I would say the first, first we say that we like to preserve the limited buffer of the forest area we have right now. I expand a little bit details why we say that. So we have a beautiful backyard. And as you can see from the picture over there on the left-hand side, that's a couple of years ago and the right hand hand side of the picture is just a couple of days, uh, two weeks ago. So we have a beautiful backyard and I have to be honest, the beautiful backyard is one of the major selling point. The reason why we bought this house, even though at that time, you know, it's, it's a little bit more than we can afford. I'd be honest at that time, but because of the backyard, we, you know, worked very hard, we even, you know, borrowed some money from relatives to get this house because of backyard. So ever since, ever since, we never regret it. So every morning we come downstairs and I would like to have a cup of coffee before the morning starts, you know, we have two kids at home and we're both working parents. And, you know, you can understand the morning, what's, you know, the Russian chaos is gonna be. But before that starts, I always, me and wife always sit over there, you know, have a drink of coffee, enjoy the moment and see the sunrise. It's beautiful moment, beautiful view and give us peace for the morning to get the chaos to get started. You know, so that's very important and that's why when we start to think about moving the shed, we can think about the picture over there, that's on the right. Later, the allowed zoom is the picture on the back over there that we put the shed over there anywhere in the picture. It's not gonna, you know, it's gonna ruin everything we worked so hard for it. So that's the backyard. And another thing is that our backyard is kind of, you know, not that deep between the edge of the tree to our house about sixty feet and we have a, you know, twelve by twenty feet shed and also plus the foundation, everything that's, it's gonna be about thirty feet. That means if we put on the backyard that is gonna occupy half of the backyard. And we would like to keep that space over there, the backyard space. So we've been thinking that the only option to put in the a permitted zone over there without, you know, you know, sacrifice the view or I should, I should say, you know, minimize or reduce the impact of the view we're working so hard for it. Or we don't, we want to save some space. The only option we'd like to do is to, you know, put in the woods over there in the back on the corner. But, you know, you can see that, please keep there.
I'm sorry.
So you can see the picture on the left, it's several years ago, we have a lot of woods area, but on the right-hand side right now because the developer on the backyard, on the back of the, the lot on the back of our house, they, they had to, had to clear cut. That means all the trees has been there, been cut it and we only have a limited zone over there. And I'm very grateful that we kept that zoom over there and I'm pretty sure the new neighbor who moved in the back of the house, they appreciate that too. We have a nice buffer over there. We still have a beautiful view, even though, you know, they had a clear cut over there. And I believe that, you know, the developer had a reason to cut it. So in that case, if we want to put the shed into the woods over there, we literally have to cut all the trees. And that's, that's, you know, that's the really the hardship we're thinking. You know, we would like to preserve the back, the buffer. And another reason is that there's a big slope over there in the, in the woods area. And you can see from the picture, the, the house in our back is literally one a floor lower than us. So that's actually the slope on the, the tree, the buffer area. And if we want to put it over there, you know, we have to do a lot of leveling, we had to cut the trees, you know, we have to dig the roots out and we also have big stones over there, we need to dig it out. And that's another hardship or, you know, like you guys to consider that for our application. So the second hardship. The second hardship is that, you know, we have a efficient water sprinkler system in that back, in the backyard. And if we put it over there and you can see if we put on the corner over there in the permitted area, we have to do a lot of, you know, piping, repiping work. We have several big sprinklers that has covering the big area. If we put over there, we have to change the sprinkler system to get a smaller one, then reorganize to the other area to cover the whole backyard. And we have to dig, do a lot of digging of the piping to the, do the reorganization to, you know, firstly, room the beautiful back lawn I had. And I worked very hard over these years to get it pretty. So that's another hardship I would like to consider. So that's the two hardship over there. And in addition, I know, you know, it's not hardship, I would like to explain the benefit of what we have over here and for the current location. The first one is for the safety. I, one of the reasons that really encouraged me to do the reapplication over here is once on the dinner table, me and my wife was talking about moving the shit and my younger daughter started yell at me saying, Daddy, why you move the shit? And I was kind of, why you care? Said, Daddy, I feel much safe when I have the shit over there. And at that time I was, you know, shocked. What I'm doing as a parent, I suppose keep my kids safe all the time. And the Dunstable Row right now is open up. Before, you know, past ten years, it wasn't open up, right now it's opened up and actually it's surprising surprisingly that the traffic is increasing every day. And I found out the reasons because right now it's, it's a shortcut to the River Row and it's a shortcut to Univale, even the GPS is guiding everyone going through over there. So the traffic is still increasing. And my, my, my daughter said that I have my, you know, balls running around and to the shed always blocked the ball, otherwise my boss is running to the roads and there's traffic. I don't feel safe over there. And she said that it does make me feel much safer. So that's, you know, that's a benefit I would like to explain over here. It's, it does keep us, I keep the kids safer, safer. And another reason is another benefit was saying that is also safety related is that we have a rain garden or the rainwater catch pond, catchment pond or whatever we call, it does accumulate a lot of water every time it rains. And so we locate that shit over there, you know, to prevent our kids running through the pond and we can't get hurt. So that's another, you know, benefit over here, we would like to keep the share we, where we are right now to keep our kids safe. So the next page, please. So another application, another benefit, of course, is convenient. As I explained last time, actually, is that this shed location is closer to our garage. And, you know, it's, you know, it's good to keep my tools and my, you know, snow, snow blowers and, and tractors, everything. A close to the driveway, close to the garage, you can think especially, you know, the snow blower. If I put on the other hand side of the house and there's no way I can bring slower, ah, snow blower out to the driveway because that's a long backyard over there. There's no way to move out. Right now it's close to the driveway, a close to the row, I can easily bring them out for the snow blowers. So that's, that's another reason we want to keep over there. It's convenient. And also another thing that we've been talking to our neighbors and they agree that this is the least impact, if any, to the, to the, to the neighborhood. Because the shed located over there is the lowest upon point of our backyard. And you can barely see it from the Alpine Drive when drive-through. And if you drive through the Dunstable, you can see the picture from there. You only see half of them mostly. And that's, that's why, you know, it's the least impact, but if we put the permitted area on the right corner of that shed, if you drive with the Alpine, it's complete, you see the entire shed sitting over there. So that's the least impact, I would say, if there's any impact to the neighborhood and most of our neighbors we talked to, I mean, every neighbor we talked to, they agree with that. So the next one is, you know, another benefit, I'm sorry, you know, I just need to add to the benefit. I hope that you can put that under consideration. The next one is next page, please.
Sorry.
Yeah, as we say, it's a most aesthetically pleasing location and every note, I have to say, every neighbor we've been talking to and they agree with us. So the location lived over there is as looked from the whole lot point of view, it's the best compared to the other permitted area. And also the last benefit I'd like, like to explain over here is that it's, of course, it keeps more privacy. You can see from the picture from the Dunstable Row. It blocks the view from our backyard. So that's, that's all the benefit I would like to explain over here. And plus we have to hurt, we provide it to hardship over there. So we need to keep them natural buffer, but they keep the trees over there. We're gonna have a lot of, you know, slopes, digging and also it impacts the neighbor from the backyard as well because if you put the shed over there, you know, every day they look up, they see a shed from the, them in the backyard. So another one is that we would like to put a supplement to this application is that, please, next page, please. We would like to grow trees and we are planning on it right now is to grow every green trees on, along the Dunstable Row. So Dunstable Circle. So that way, you know, you won't be able to see the shed either from Alpine Drive or from the Dunstable when you drive through. So I would like to, you know, that area, the shed foundation is, we measure literally close to four feet lower than Dunstable Row. And if we grow, grow, grow evergreen tree, even your younger age, you barely can see the shed. And of course, the evergreen can grow almost one feet. Oh, almost one foot a year. So it can easily cover the shed from being seen from the road when you drive through. So that's the supplement that we would like to, you know, do to add it to this application. So of course, we also have some neighbor support. I'm apprec, I appreciate Dr. Bloom, Dr. Kumar, Dr. Kelly, who actually nicely even provide a supporting letter to the town to support that, you know, the, the shed location currently have. So with all that, with our hardship we have, including the, you know, the, the hardship that we won't be able to put that in the trees with a slope and also, you know, preserve the nature buffer limit we have and also with all the benefits we have and with this, you know, or with, with the supplement that we, we are going to grow the tree, grow evergreen trees and also with the support of the neighbors, I would like you, you know, put under the consideration to help us, help our kids and help the neighborhood when you do the final decision. Thank you.
Um, let's start with Commissioners having questions. Commissioner Walsh?
Not any questions at this time.
Thank you.
Commissioner Callahan?
No questions.
Commissioner Cloud?
No questions.
Commissioner Marsh?
No questions.
I just have a couple of questions. You, you indicated that you spoke to your neighbors. What about the homeowner who has the house on Dunstable Close that's beha- closest to the shed? Have you talked to that neighbor, the one behind the shed there?
They just moved two months ago. I haven't had a chance to talk to them yet, to be honest.
So they, they did not write a letter as far as you know.
Okay.
Is that true?
Yes.
All right, and?
This one, Mr. Schoen, Chairman Schoen, behind the house?
Yeah, that's the one, yeah.
So here's, here's seventy Alpine, here's the shed, here's Dunstable Close, this house or the one on Alpine?
Have they sent anything to the?
No, no, I just wanted to confirm that's the one you asked. Yeah, I mean, the property owners email, uh, emailed. Did the certified mailing for, so they were notified. I know the, the neighbor on Alpine is on the call and they'll have the chance to speak when we open the public hearing.
Yep.
But not the one, not the one on Dunstable Close and town heard nothing.
In the, in the satellite view is still under construction.
Yeah, this is March of this year, but that, I think they, uh,
They moved.
Yes, they moved in.
A month ago, I believe.
And, and you said that you'd be willing to install a row of, of evergreens, like what Arbor Vity, what, what were you thinking of and how we're talking about at least four foot tall?
Yes, we're thinking at least four foot tall and we even trying, we considering five and fi- five and six feet. And honestly, I don't know the numbers. I don't know the name of the tree, but we, we like certain type that can cover, you know, the entire area. We're gonna plan, there were suggesting every other, every feet grew, oh, I don't remember, every feel, every two feet.
Well, you would want to leave some space so they grow into each other.
Yes, yes.
You have no objection then if we were to approve this to make it a condition that you install and maintain a row of evergreens that would be evergreen bushes that would be starting at least four feet.
Yes, I have no, I have no objections for that.
And would you at least explain, you, you listed in your reasons for the hardship, you talked about due to the topography of the neighborhood. Could you just explain that a little bit more for our benefit? You talked about that they clear cut the woods, but you, can you talk about why the topography makes this the better spot? Or why it's a hardship to put it behind that?
Well, first, that's what I said, why, why it's a hardship? Because if you put over there in the right corner, we'd like to, you know, minimize the impact, right? So we'd like to keep in the woods over there, but that means we need to cut the wood over there and there's a big slope. As I say, there's a one-floor slope over there that, you know, that big slope gonna prevent us to do it. And also we have to dig the, you know, cut the trees, dig the root out and there are several big stones sitting on the ground that I need to dig them out as well in order to level them out to put the shit over there. That's the hardship I would like to explain. It's, it's really hard.
So it is steeper on that side?
Yes, as I say, the, the picture, the house behind us is one floor lower than us. That's the deep slope, literally, once, one floor deep of the slope.
And so the first thing then is, was there anything else? I didn't want to cut you off.
That's okay, no, that's, that's.
Right. And before we go to to the correspondence, I'm first gonna ask, is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of the applicant? Now, there are, you said there are some individuals or at least one who's appearing remotely?
Yes.
All right, so, so I'm gonna say, is it just one person?
Yes, yeah, that's all I see.
So let me just say, is there anyone present who wishes to, in the, in the room, wishes to speak in opposition to the applicant? All right, so we'll go to the online comment and is that person now online?
Yes, hold on one second. Rakesh, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
So we're gonna ask you to state your name and your address for the record before speaking. Or shall I say before commenting?
Just hold on one second, Mister Chairman.
Yeah, all right, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes.
Hello? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, okay, we can hear you. Can you state your name and address for the record?
Yes. I'm Rakesh Kansara and I am property at seven if overall.
Mister Kansara, your, um, your sound is distorted, could you? We're having difficulty hearing you. Could you start over again, please, and state your address, please? Mister Kansara, you're still there? Modern technology. All right, while we're waiting for Mister Kansara to get back on, you indicated that we had some, there
Yes.
There's some correspondence.
Oh, hold on.
Is there anyone else who's on the?
Uh, Mr. Kansara logged out and logged back in, but who am I?
Oh.
If, I'll just run through it really quick and then I'll, I'll, um,
Yeah.
All right. So we received a letter from, uh, Alicia Bloom at 81 Alpine Drive in support of the application. From, uh, Ravikav Kala and Dr. Toshida Kumar at 62 Alpine Drive in favor of the application. And the letter from Jomas Kelly and Sisakaran at 70 Alpine in favor of the application.
Now 66.
I'm sorry, 66.
Yeah, right next door.
I, they had to, I had to look up their address. They only put, uh, your address in the, um, all right, let me. Mr. Kansara, there you go.
Yeah, can you, yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, sorry about that. Uh, so yeah, so I'm on the other side of the, uh, of the Dunstable Road on the Alpine Drive next to Lee's house and his property. And, uh, I have no objection him keeping the shed in, uh, the current position as it is right now. The one thing I would say is that, um, and I heard about planting some of the, um, arbor trees, uh, or whatnot that Lee spoke about, which is fine. The only thing is like, if those trees go really tall, uh, then they might probably, you know, block some views and things like that. So if to an extent, I have no problem if he doesn't plant any trees. Um, and because no, the shade is really in the lower area. So as it is even without planting trees, that is fine. Uh, and I don't really have any, uh, problem as such if he doesn't plant any trees. But if he plants, um, I would request that, uh, maybe, I know, um, uh, not plant the ones which would go like a 12, 15 feet. And that might, um, I don't know, look as if, um, the, uh, you know, it, it would block the whole view on that side. But, uh, other than that, I have no, no problem as such of his shade remaining as it is.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else, um, who wishes to speak? Mr. Day, was anyone else online?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I do not see anyone else online. Um, Mr. Chairman, before you close the hearing, could I just add some additional for the commissions? Um, so, uh, we had been talking about the Arborvitie just so generally when it comes to site plans, Arborvitie, Arborvi, Arborvitie is what we'll use that as a, we, you can make a condition that it's Arborvitie approved alternative. We can work that out with, uh, the property owners. Um, they generally planted six feet on center. Um, that's the spacing because they get about six feet wide. Um, so they don't, you know, they'll fill in over time, but in the first few years, um, four to six feet is usually a general, uh, an average planting height. So that's not out of the question or would be difficult to find. Um, they do grow about one foot a year. Um, it's up to the commission whether they want them setback from the property line. I'm sorry, the board, um, setback from the property line or not. Um, missed, uh, the property owner did show, um, a potential area, um, on the, as part of the application. Um, so here's, uh, Dunstable Close. Um, here's the shed, here's the, uh, rain garden detention area for the property. Um, and the Arborvitie are shown in green. Or I'm sorry, the evergreen plantings will be, are shown in green.
And what is the setback from the, um, Barnstable Close?
It is from the road, it's, uh, 45 to 55 feet from the property line. It's about, I think it was 30 to 45 feet, um, from the right away, from the, from the property line inside of the right away.
Okay.
But from the curve, it's about 55 feet at the farthest, 45 at the closest.
All right. And, and it's a general rule, how high if you use Arborvitie? How high does that grow once they're mature? They, they have a top level, right?
Yes, I think the regular Arborvitie, I think grow to about 10 or 12 feet. The giant Arborvitie get up to 20 feet if I remember correctly.
Right.
But it's a different.
Address Mr. Kansara's concern about, uh, you know, giant trees that could in the future.
Right.
But it would be, you're saying they grow about one foot a year?
In full sun with good watering and ideal conditions, they grow up to a foot a year. Correct.
Right.
So, and we, we would like to grow the trees that we're gonna maintain a high, of course. We're not gonna let it grow all the way tall.
Then you would trim it at the top.
Yes, exactly.
All right. Does anyone else, any other commissioner wa, wish it, have a last opportunity to speak? All right. Then I'm going to, um, close the hearing at this time. And I'll entertain him.
Could I hold up once? Sorry, Mr. Chairman, please sit down. You're outside.
Is everyone on still?
Yeah.
Right.
Yes.
Um, I'll remind the commissioners that in order to discuss a matter, there has to be a motion in it. Uh, the preference is that it be stated in the affirmative regardless of how that commissioner is going to vote. And I have a motion.
I want to approve, um, Vin Jin's application for variance to locate accessory structure. So other than required yard of a property located in 70 Alpine Drive, R40, no.
And does that, um, motion with a friendly amendment include provided that there, that there will be a, a stand of evergreens such as Arborvitie that when planted are at least four feet tall?
Correct, yes.
All right. Is there a second to that motion? Second.
Sorry.
Commissioner Callahan. Okay, let's have some, uh, discussion. Commissioner Walsh, it's your motion.
Nothing to add to it? Our motions, as long as they plant trees as required.
All right. Commissioner Callahan.
I, I can favor the application given the additional evidence of hardship. And frankly, I, as far as the planting the Arborvitie for a buffer, uh, given that, given the favorable comments from neighbors and the only concern being regarding the Arborvitie, given the photographs that we've been able to see. I frankly think the Arborvities may be more trouble than they're worth and would not condition approval on that requirement.
I, I will just note that's part of the motion at this point, Commissioner Callahan. So.
I understand.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Cloud.
I agree. I think it's, um, a pretty straightforward decision. I applaud their effort to come back and to, you know, have us reexamine this. It makes a lot more sense with the hardships that they have, uh, put before us this evening.
Commissioner Marsh.
Yes, I totally agree. Also, and I think that we could alleviate the hardship uh, by a simple walk.
A, and, um, speaking as chair, I'm gonna, I agree. I believe that the applicant this time has presented sufficient reasons that would constitute hardships. I will note there was still some effort to talk about the benefits. We don't talk about the benefits. We talk about why there needs to be a variance from the regulations. And, uh, based on that, I believe that, uh, provided that there is the buffer, because it's so close to a new road, there will be a buffer to that, um, shed. Uh, I also would be in favor of this, uh, application for those reasons. So, um, Mr., um, Mr. Day, would you call the roll?
I would be happy to. All right. Uh, Commissioner Marsh.
Yes.
Commissioner Cloud.
Yes.
Commissioner Walsh.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
And Chairman Showhorn.
Yes. So.
The variance is approved.
So there will be some procedures you have to go through. The town will prepare the, uh, uh, the proper paperwork. I think it has to be filed on the land records at some point. And the part of that process will mean that you have to maintain that Arborvitie or whichever is approved by the town, um, the the particular, uh, evergreen. So thank you for coming in.
Right.
And good luck. All right, um, we now have to turn to the, well, you're all set.
Yes.
Thank you. So I'll just acknowledge that we have some, uh, some government students here from Farmington High School. And, um, I don't know if you have, there aren't a lot of us up here, but before we go to our final matter, which is really just approving next year's schedule and the minutes. Is there anything that, um, any of you wish to ask about what we do or anything like that?
Sure. You can come up to the microphone. You can come up.
If you want to come up to the podium, it'll be part of the record.
Oh, is that a good question? Okay. So, uh, do I have to do that?
No, you don't. What, what's your question though?
Oh, you have no questions? Oh, okay.
Oh, okay. I thought you did have a question. Fair enough. All right. So let's move on to the, um, to the, um, new business, which is the 2024 schedule on your screen. We have, it's usually the, been the third, um, Monday of the month, but the several months where holidays fall on a Monday, so that takes place on a Tuesday. And the one meeting in, I guess March is when the, uh, town council usually has
Your budget time.
Budget meetings and they usually take up the council chambers on that Monday.
Yes, I, I got, um, January is Martin Luther King Day. Hold on. February is President's Day. March will be on a Monday, but there's a budget workshop. Um, so he might not be in council chambers that night depending on if the budget runs long. Um, April is the day, yeah, conflicts of the town meeting. Uh, uh, March is because of a town plan and zoning commission meeting that we, the night before, so we moved that to Tuesday. Um, no, wait, I'm sorry.
May. May, yeah.
Yes, May, I'm sorry. Um, July is fine. We don't meet in August. September's fine. October is due to Columbus Day holiday. Um, November's fine and December's fine. But that's as presented, so there'll all be regular meetings.
Right. I'll entertain a motion then to approve the, uh, 2024 schedule of, 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 uh, meetings.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry to interrupt. I, I do have a question. Can we go back to January? What was the date on that?
Yep, hold on, uh, Chris.
Was it actually on MLK Day?
No, we moved it to Tuesday, that's why.
Okay, good. All right.
It would only be Monday. Yeah.
Got it. Okay.
Yeah, we won't be, yeah. I said, you say we won't be here. So we moved, cause the town offices are closed Monday, we moved it to Tuesday.
Got it. Thanks for that clarification.
No problem.
So I'll entertain him. Are you gonna make the motion, Chris? Commissioner Cloud?
I move that we accept the 2024 meeting schedule as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimously approved. Is there a planner's report?
Yes. Um, so as a reminder, um, per Connecticut General Statute eight dash four C, um, which has not been amended yet in the general statutes for the lawyers, um, but it becomes effective, I think, January 1st. Um, the commissioner training requirements have been amended to require four hours of training every four years. Um, Town of Farmington does two hours every two years, um, usually to coincide with the, the start of new commission members with the elections. Um, so our, our, uh, training is gonna be Monday, January 8th at 7:00 PM, um, and broadcast on Zoom. So we'll be in here with, uh, our town attorney, Ra, uh, Robert DiCrescendo. Um, cast members are asked to attend. If you can't attend in person, you can attend online. Um, I'll reach out.
What's the date of that?
Uh, January 8th, it's a Monday. And I'll send out multiple reminders and Zoom invites and everything so that no one.
7:00 PM?
Yes, 7:00 PM, either here or on Zoom, Carrie.
And, and Garrett, would you also make sure that all the new
Yes.
members of the board get the invite?
Yes, so I've got, uh, future Commissioner Gamski and future Commissioner Grady Benson's emails. Um, I forget who the other two I'm missing.
The Sub, Submar, Subramarian.
Yes.
Romanian and, um, and, um, Mary Ann Dest Santoro.
Yes, yes. So once, um, they get sworn in, uh, we usually.
And Peter Mesterbe.
Yes, yes. So normally when they get sworn in, um, when they get sworn in, we get their emails. That way we can add to the list, but we'll, um, I gotta reach out to the town clerk to have them come see us. Um, and choose the hand so we can get any information from them we can and explain everything to them. Um, and that's it. And I, per the state statutes, we have to send certification that we've completed the training by March 1st of 2024. So.
All right. So I urge everyone, including incoming members, not to miss the January 8th training. All right. Um, and do we have any, uh, applications in the hopper for December at this point?
Not that I'm aware of. I've talked to a few people that are interested in doing work at their house. Um, that might require variance, but I haven't, I don't know what anyone's timeline is or anything.
So at this point, we, we don't have it scheduled for December yet.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, most likely have our January meeting just for, um, elections as administrative meeting. Um, if there's no January applications, um, but that's it for now.
I understand that. All right. So the, uh, the second to last thing is the minutes of the, um, September 18th meeting. Um, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes of the September 18th, 2023 meeting of the Farmington ZBA.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? And now I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.